All right, I will have the calls to order regularity because the board is from February 18th, February 2nd, if the audience will join the board and pledge.
Clinton, please, this is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Public comment number one, this comment pertains to public with rest topics on today's agenda. See anybody move towards the mic?
Mr. Chair, this is not a public comment that's public, but I'd just like to acknowledge that the month of February nationally has been recognized as Black History Month. By many years of teaching, I used to dedicate time during that month to point out certain significant contributions of African-Americans to the American culture. And so there'll be a lot of different activities, whether it's the city library or within the community, that'll focus on some of the African-Americans that have made contributions. So I just ask the public to stay tuned to some of the events and happenings as we reflect on contributions of African-Americans in American society.
Very good, thank you. Our employee recognition that we would have done today, we'll get on the agenda for next week. Consideration of minutes from January 26th.
Will approve.
Second. Motion to second, any additions or corrections? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
No personnel actions. Considered agenda, we need to add the utility permit sixteen forty-eight.
Will approve with no changes.
Second. Motion to second, any further? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Additional items? Discussion and consideration of capital assets policy after the seven-day review. Mr. Martin? Story County Attorney and Commissioner of Elections.
Yes, we have two elections going on today, so that's fun. I'm bringing back the capital asset policy after seven-day review. I sent this out to all department heads and elected officials. I received three comments before this morning's meeting. Two of them had to do with the dollar range for items listed on physical inventory. You might remember this also came up during the purchasing policy. And they were from the bigger departments who have the most physical inventory and therefore the most burden to keep all of this in order. Facilities had asked to raise the range to a thousand dollars and the sheriff's office made a comment wouldn't mind seeing that raised to twenty-five hundred dollars. So I looked through all the physical inventory of all the departments and offices and here's what falls into that five hundred and one dollar to a thousand dollar range. And those are firearms, tactical vests, computers, laptops, cameras, tablets, power tools. Those are all canoes, file cabinets, desks and desk chairs. So you might notice a lot of those are pretty portable items. Just so you know, what those items look like in that dollar range.
Sure.
I didn't look into thousand to twenty-five hundred, I did look in that five hundred to a thousand range.
Five hundred to a thousand, so even if you hypothetically moved it to a thousand, those items, would they still need to be recorded?
They would all fall off mandatory reporting.
Off mandatory.
Yeah. I did add to this asset policy that, and this is something in my office because say my election, laptops, those came in just under five hundred dollars, but they go out to the public, they're very portable, so I tag all of those, so I know where they are. So those are all the items that you would lose if you raised the dollar threshold. So I'm just putting it out there to you to take that into consideration. Just know that if you do change that, it will also have to revise the purchasing policy as well. And I think the financial policy is too.
Okay, so one more question spot, one question spot.
What I'm here.
So coming back to core, looking at this, does it change a lot for you that you were, because this is self-reported, this is stuff that they have to look at and then send you the document or sign off on this?
Right, there are hundreds of items that fall off the list of mandatory reporting if you change the dollars.
How do you account for though, if there are way to still have an accounting form? Or is it necessary to account?
Only if the department or office chooses to do that. And it would be, it would be up to the individual office or department to choose to account for those or not.
Now, the tough part is what do you feel is comfortable policy if you?
Well, I brought the five hundred dollar mark, that's where our, doing the physical inventory every year, talking to the state owners every year before I am on it, that's what I would consider appropriate, but this was accounting policy, so that's...
Well, I am really, really appreciative, especially from the departments that have so many, departments and offices that have so many items that fall in that five hundred, that dollar to a thousand dollar range specifically. But I think it is completely appropriate for us to continue to monitor and track those items, understand it creates a little more work occasionally when we have to go through and do the tracking, but this is all, these are all public goods, they're public dollars being used. And I think tracking the items that are valued above five hundred dollars is completely appropriate. I'd recommend it to stick with what it is, with all appreciation to those who make comments. And I recognize it is a little more work, I just think it's appropriate.
Ultimately, for the three of us are stewards of the taxpayer dollars and out of their spend. And if it's burdensome for those public officials that are also charged with washing out for the taxpayers' dollars, then I'm sorry for that, but that's why they have staff on hand and I think it's fully appropriate also that we leave that five hundred dollar threshold right where it's at.
Well, and you look at the, just do it dollar for dollar. You look at the man-hours that we have to put in to count these items. You don't have to lose very many five hundred dollar items before you've more than paid for whatever personnel time you've got to put in to track them.
Absolutely. So you want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the policy after seven-day review as it was originally presented to us seven days ago.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Two? Aye, that's been approved. Thanks Lucy.
Oh sure, I just wanted to make one more comment, which was the physical inventory part. Margaret James, Department of Homeland Director, asked that we make that a film form and I thought that was a great idea. So we're moving forward with that, I don't have that to present today, but that...
That doesn't require action from us though.
No, but I just thought that that, we did get a useful comment about that. I mean, I totally understand the dollar comment, but I just, we didn't receive three comments, so I wanted to hear all of them.
And I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you reach out to the department head, the elected official, who requests that everybody's limit, just with a rationale, probably what we did.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Lucy. Okay, our next two items, discussion and consideration of asset recommendations and the discussion of the Story County detox service lending have been moved to, first one's been moved to the sixteenth, so the asset will be on the sixteenth. The detox discussion will be on the ninth and as to the weather and regulations. And the next item is discussion and consideration of the communications slash marketing and strategies. Leanne, her, she's over there.
Good morning.
Morning.
It was actually a year ago today that I was here, the 2015 communication plan. What is for you today for consideration is getting in content essentially the same with modifications to the strategy, strategies, but there are some modifications, I might go over those briefly, because if you looked at, compared last year's communication plan to this one, you would think that there are two different, entirely different documents. First of all, as you see on the right, we have this communication plan, the entire format has been modified. Previously, it was a landscape format, what I've done is created it so that it matches the same branding that we've had with everything else, the CIP and C2C plans, strategic plan. I'm just happy it consists of this from Story County. Pretty minor, but for someone looking at this from the outside, they could, I could see why they would say it's a whole different approach. If you see in the middle there, it has four sections, historical overview, goals, target, audiences and strategies. Again, very similar elements to what we have right now as the adopted plan. And then there's this little blur, which is new, but just kind of an overview of why we have this plan. This is the third year that I brought a communication plan to the board supervisors. And I think it just shows our target audiences, why the board has established this one, to have a timing, so we communicate what we know when we know it, openly provide public information in a way that's easy to access and understand, and proactively engage our customers and stakeholders before we ask to provide information to determine future. So with that, the goal sections, section number two, again, these are the very same five goals that were initially in place in 2014. Transparency and county government accessibility through duration of projects or issues. Next is sharing our vision with general public and decision makers. Third, improving communications between the board and constituents. Fourth, ensuring public and county employees have factual information. And lastly, providing courses for responsible communication.
Can we go back to that one?
Yeah.
Just saw on that next last bullet point. That'd be great if we could ensure that everybody had factual information, but we can't. Can we, can we ensure that they have access to factual information?
Yep.
The number of times I get frustrated that people don't have factual information would make your day.
Say have access to factual information.
Ensure the public and the county employees have access to factual information.
Access, yeah.
Target audiences, same five, oops, sorry, forgot I had animation in here. Same five as past two years, county employees, public officials, general public, the media and then the others. The others are, you know, our travelers that are passing through on Highway thirty, Interstate thirty-five, here for Iowa games, whatever it may be, is the other target audience. So in the draft plan, there are twenty strategies and it is very difficult to read up there. Many of these are the same ones that we carry forth. Some did drop off this year, such as the Box City Festival that we do with Nevada Community School District, that's once every four years, as well as Leadership Nevada, the county government section, that's once every two years. And what has been added is the annual report, second to the bottom, and the legislative priority summary. Those are two items we started last year as a county, and so it is second to the obvious rule. And then nine down from the top, like right in the middle there, we have the KHOI monthly radio updates that I started last fall and still keep on doing those the second Monday of each month. So the strategies are on the left-hand side and then the target audiences are on the right, obviously if there's an X, that is to whom that strategy is designed to meet those goals that have been outlined. Really though, it would be fair statement to say all these strategies are targeted at all five audiences. I mean, that would be our ultimate goal. The delivery may vary slightly with depending on the target audience and the message. So with that, do you recommend adoption of the proposed plan as modified from the 2015 plan and then with Rick's comments for the fourth goal there? Now, if you've got any answer, any questions?
Prime to vote to approve or not approve the revised plan. Is it feasible or do you think it would be feasible that during, sometime during a calendar year, that some of our more high-profile departments might just come in part of a public forum and just give us a little update on their interactions with the public, the kinds of requests that they've had? Do they see that they are, that this type of communication plan is extremely helpful as we move forward? You know, I think this is more than just communication from the board supervisors. You know, I look at the agencies that really have more direct contact with the public, whether it's P and D, whether it's environmental help, whether it's Secretary of Health, the Audit Office, you know, certification. And just somehow, if it's a countywide plan, we would like to, either as part of our staffing, when we have our departmental staffing, we need to mention this, bring it up, try to see if people can share with us. Is it helpful in some ways? Are they, because to me, the public, if they are aware that we are making a concerted effort to really enhance communication, you're going to hear feedback from them. And I'm like, and not that we necessarily do a survey, but sometimes you do a survey. I know the assessors usually do a survey, you know, to get public response to saying, just want you to mull that around a little bit, not that I have an answer today, but if you think this might be something that we ought to incorporate, I know it would be, I can see some value.
Minimum I definitely will add it to the agenda for us next staff meeting to go over the specifics and address what you mentioned.
Yeah, Wayne, I think it's a, it's a great point. I mean, so you look at where we were six years ago in terms of the outreach that we were doing as a board on behalf of the county. And basically, with one or two exceptions, every one of those is a new initiative that we put forward. And so I'm really thrilled with the foundational elements of our efforts to communicate, but I think, Wayne, an assessment of the effectiveness of some of those things is completely appropriate. I think we've grown this to the point now that it is time to start to figure out how we need to assess this for its effectiveness. But overall, I look at that and I say, it is reasonable for somebody to not get information from the county. It's not reasonable for us not to make the effort to provide the information. I think we are trying to provide information and now we're just trying to find a more streamlined effective way to get it up. Good job. And with that, I'd move approval as presented.
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve the communications and marketing.
The slight amendment.
With the slight amendments, pass on it, yep.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Sanders?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Two?
Aye, that's been approved.
Thanks Leanne. Good job Leanne.
No agents reports, department reports. Real House Corolla report, Margaret James. Real House Director. Thanks for coming over.
Cheers everyone. This is the move.
Margaret, before you get started, I don't know if you listened to budget audio, but we did have a conversation with the sheriff about the possibility of securing the vehicle that he's currently driving, which is due to be rotated out of in FY seventeen for your department.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure you were aware that we've had that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, I think I got something just ahead of the slide, a little more than that. So, morning, on a snowy day, on the way in, the car in front of me did a one-eighty, so...
Oh wow.
Yeah, so I get a gold star for not turning around like Shelley Britt.
Gold star for Margaret.
Gold star for Margaret. Septics, we did good this past year, this is twenty fifteen numbers, eighty-four total. A lot of those were the Cameron Estates permits that came up and then also some of the Free Grove. For wells, we plugged twenty, or I mean, we permitted twenty-nine new wells into those water, twenty-three pluggings by pre-habs, one hundred fifty-two samples and forty-five kind of transfers. Just recently, in the past month, Boone County and Lynn County called us to learn about our programs and how we do kind of transfer well inspections. A lot of folks have not had that and it's a really good program, so it's kind of, it feels good to have people coming to us for advice on that. Brands to counties, we have a balance of about twelve thousand dollars right now till the end of this fiscal year. The picture I just saw, this was an interesting example, the pipes you see on the right, that's the jet pump going, there's a well right there where those pumps are. And the thing to the left that's out of pre-rout, that's actually a gas line. So very, very dangerous if someone were to do that and that's why we're not allowing very wells, they have to be up above the ground surface. Let's see, so for enforcement, boy, it has all been about press view this past month. I've spent a lot of time working on press view, with calls, letters and DNR and all that. But as far as other things, we have one overdue time transfer binding agreement, ten notice violations, a lot of those still on hold until the weather gets better. New M B for press view for the water supply, there's still that outstanding one because they have three vacant trailers, but I think they have to work with the treasurer's office to get that take over squared away. Oh, let's see, we had a septic system did a beautiful job, but they put the wrong materials in and I'm making them rip it out. He was not a certified contractor, he said he had someone overseeing him, he did not. So this spring, they had to rip it out, put a new one in. That took a lot of time, there's a lot of angst involved with that, but I think it is what it is, you know? Complaints, we received a gal that wasn't happy with the solid, how cullin' scandal solid placed, a lot of press view letters. We received one call about odor from DuPont, a complaint about ICU dairy manure land application. And ICU does not necessarily even have to file a manure management plan, they can kind of do what they want because they are an educational and research institution. So we're watching that, we're helping keep an eye on that and just work with them. And then the lead house is selling again, so I got a complaint on that.
I think it's, did it sell?
I don't know.
Was it the process of?
I think it, yeah, but they have to disclose that, so, but again, we're out of the lead business now, so it's off the line. Let's see, I participated in the Slater Source Water Protection Program, so letters and brochures went out to all septic owners within the focus area. And so we ran, and this was just by chance, we ran into a septic system that was very close to the city water wells and they have no system, they just go right to the drain tile, you know? And so we started taking, so I sent down a letter saying that he had to switch to the city sewer because he's within two hundred feet back. The interesting thing though, we just kind of fell into that one because when we were researching it, we were using an old set of sewer maps. And so we saw he was on the very outer ring and now the new map shows lines past him. So we, so usually you look and you think, well, everybody within the city limits with all these lines, they're hooked together, I mean, they're hooked to sewer. But you know, it's where those rings are added, you miss some. And so those are the ones that we have to make, make a closer study of. So the green check marks are the ones that have submitted their updated sewer maps to us this year and we're still, I'll have to send another round of letters to those other guys so that we can take a closer look at those.
Margaret, what's our role in this Slater issue versus the city of Slater's role?
Well, Slater has it on books, but they require it only if it's gravity and this is going to have to be a pump system, okay? So we get involved, if you're within two hundred feet of a sewer line, we can, we or the state can require them to hook to city service, okay? The city can turn around and refuse that service, that's a whole nother problem, but usually we work well with it. They want the business. So this is going to be a tricky one, I've heard that he's a tough, a tough customer to work with, so.
So is it the likelihood of added pollution, that's going to be impacting the city or what?
You know, well, we did, so you know, we just kind of took a look at all possible contamination that would affect or impact the Slater wells, right? This is a real simple one because it's flat and there's no creeks or rivers going through it, so that's why it's just the surface, okay? And so we were looking at lust sites, we were looking at septic systems, abandoned wells, and then businesses like the co-op, there are businesses that could potentially pollute their wells. So it was, it was quite an effort, there were about only ten people that would show up pretty regularly to talk about this and then there's a document produced, DNR put some money toward it and each city is supposed to be doing this. Whether it helps or not, I don't know, but I think it does because we caught that one guy, I would have caught him, you know, with a complete septic system real close to the wells.
So is it?
Yeah, I was working right there.
So I think what I'm curious about is, is it, we're ultimately enforced, this gentleman says, no, I'm not tying on. Does enforcement reside with the board of supervisors, does it reside with the board of health, does it reside with the state?
Board of health.
It resides with the board of health, I think.
Yes.
Alright, so our role in this, this is informational for us.
Correct. Almost everything I do is board health, except for well providing is under board supervision.
Well, but we're responsible for passing ordinances.
Correct, correct. Well, in a sense that it is board supervisors because this is...
We have the ordinance on the two hundred, and so what I'm curious, and maybe it's unnecessary, but it's a snowy day and I'm curious, I'm curious of what the process is, if this gentleman says, no, I'm not, I'm not doing it, what happens, what's next?
Well, then I contact legal and they help me with the citation, but you know, we will work with them for a long time, that's just what we do. And then if push comes to shove, it would be a citation with a possible fine if he doesn't do what he has to do.
But the board of supervisors' role, at some point, a board of supervisors pass an ordinance that says, if you're within two hundred feet, you have to tie, is that, is that accurate?
With authority's discretion, so if it's going to cost them sixty thousand, we could say, well, do that or put in a new septic system, which will cost you ten thousand.
Right.
So there is a little bit of...
And I would imagine the potential impact would matter to you. So for example, you said this is really close to the water source, right? I would imagine if this were out in the middle of nowhere, would there be any impact or anything? It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily rise to the level that you, the board of health, would have taken.
I agree, yes, yeah, it's important, I agree. So for trainings and meetings, the three of us went to the regional DNR meeting, I attended the drug use recognition training, that was quite an eye-opener for me. Word meeting, budget workshop, IOWAA, all three of us went to that to get our continuing education for our certifications, central view, PPI that Leanne orchestrated. And then EcoFlow, this is just kind of an interesting thing, they're moving away from peat moss to cocoa shreddings for these new little units that they're moving in. So it's, it's a byproduct of the coconut industry, so it's already kind of there, they used to just burn the coconut and so, and peat moss is a renewable, but kind of a non-renewable resource, so that's kind of the thing with the technology, it's really cool, I think. And then, you know, I just want to mention, we've got Stephanie Jones on board, she went to the budget workshop with me, she's just a real nice addition to both our departments, just really glad to have her, we got a good one.
Good.
Free Grove update, so nine were under that grant, eight systems are in and one more for this spring and he is going to do it.
That's everybody.
Well, everybody except for one, okay, there's these guys that went to a pipe that had the laundry break them showing and then this one guy that's not on that pipe, so we couldn't, we couldn't technically say, yes, you are polluted, you know? So everybody here, but not this guy and he happens to be the closest one to, and no record of the system. So, sent down a letter, haven't heard back, you know, so we'll see, still working on it, got to the end of the fiscal year. Price range on the systems, range from seven to twelve thousand, a lot of that ended on if they needed a pump. Paul already knows about this, we talked about this a lot last time, lust site in Nevada, the old Dairy Queen used to have, it's got a leaking underground tank for McGee, went out of business but left money for some cleanup. This one wasn't caught because it closed before they were required to register the leaking underground storage tanks. So then this guy went to sell and that's when this all came about, that they learned that this is a problem tank. Still in the ground and leaking and you can see the plume there, but... Still in the ground and leaking, and you can see the plume there, but so like Kalioline and benzene, those kinds of things that are known carcinogens, have contaminated the groundwater and the soil on their lot and then the lot south, which has been for a very long time, a childcare center.
In that way.
So.
What was at the Dairy Queen site before, was it Dairy Queen, was it?
Deep Rock, Deep Rock Gas Station.
Oh.
They've had it for years.
Oh, all right.
And stories have it that, you know, you could smell it there for a long time, everybody kind of knew there was a problem, but it never got fixed.
And there was, did you see that there was a truck up there this week? Some sort of a vacuum type rig.
Okay, are they getting safety?
Right, we, there, there, somebody was up there doing some, some sort of work on it.
Wow, that didn't see that.
There was a big vacuum truck out there, so, a couple, three days this week, last week maybe, yeah, last week.
I, I do not believe, and I understand this is not strictly our jurisdiction, but I totally believe that knowing what we know, we can just sit idly by and, and hope that something good happened. Now, I recognize that the city of Nevada needs to have skin in the game, that the board of health has some authority in this, but I think it's also our responsibility. So, you know, we were just told that this thing is leaking some carcinogens with a daycare center right next door. I, I don't buy that this is one of those that we can just be patient and hope everything works out, I think we need to fully explore what steps are involved in getting this thing cleaned up, what, any mitigation there is for whoever has to put in the money, clearly there's dollars involved in getting it cleaned up, and you may be trying to get blood out of a turnip, trying to, trying to go to previous owners, current owner, previous owners, but I don't think it's in the city of Nevada's, it, it's definitely not in, in the public's best interest that this thing continue, it's not in the city of Nevada's best interest, it's not in Story County's best interest. And I think when we come across something like this, too many times you see government, well, yeah, we know about it, but it's the owner's respons, yes, the owner's responsibility, but it's creating a public health hazard, especially to these young children who are next door. And you did make notification with them.
I did kind of check the owner of the house out and asked her if she was going to do anything, she, she said that she's only taking care of family related children, okay? And, and I offered to help at least try to notify the families that had children staying there at one point, because this has been an ongoing thing, and she, she is perfectly comfortable that the children weren't impacted by this, is what she said.
And based on what, I mean, is she your medical, I mean, based on what?
Yeah.
That's, that's true. You know, I, I think it demands further exploration, the way it sounds.
So there's an engineer on it, there are the ones that did the plume mass, sounds like they're out there doing something. You know, to me, I think that they should do a total soil removal for that property.
But I would assume that that has to reach a certain threshold before they'll do that.
Yes. And I, you know, this is, and this is a DNR thing, you know, this, this was more of an informational, we always get these copy of these for, you know, for information. So I just thought, well, you know, let's at least talk to the property owners, see what's going on with that.
I, I would assume it's a DNR thing, I get it, I would ask that the board of supervisors work with the board of health, maybe the two chairs, the chair of the board of supervisors and the chair of board of health, one together.
Yeah.
To draft a letter.
That'd sound really good.
To draft a letter.
How many hats can you wear, sir?
To the DNR stating our grave concern over this issue, and that we're not willing to just have this thing drag on.
Right.
We're seeing it all over the place, right? You go to, you hate to invoke Flint, Michigan, but when, once a governmental entity discovers that there is something hazardous to the public, it's not reasonable to just sit back and, and just hope it gets taken care of, or take your time to take care of it, it's time to get these things taken care of.
Well, and I asked her if they offered to buy her property from her, because I thought that would be the appropriate thing for, for the owner, or the owner of the problem group, so the Curmahee out of money that's available for this cleanup. And she was not interested in pursuing that. But to me, that would be a natural thing, and then maybe demolish the house, I don't know.
Well, I, so I just think about, as, as a parent of adult kids now, but when my kids were of daycare age, right, if I, and I'm a parent who's a, you know, pseudo-family or whatever, if there was something dangerous just across the fence, or seeping under the fence, and I didn't know about it, and I'm dropping my kids off there every day.
Right.
And, and somebody, not me, is giving assurances that everything's fine.
Yeah.
And I find out later that local governmental entities knew there was a problem and nobody ever said anything to me, I think, I think I would rightly be livid. And my concern is right now, we're hearing from this owner of this house who, I'm gonna call it a pseudo daycare, is running with a pseudo daycare.
And it's not a certified daycare.
Absolutely, and I'm not, I'm not even getting into that, but what I'm afraid of is we've got no paper trail at all to show that any children who are there, their parents have been notified of this very real issue that we know exists. They're, how's that reasonable? And, and I don't know what authority we have to reach out and notify these people, or demand that she notify these people, but they have to be notified, they, they have to be.
How do you suggest we get our hands on that list, though, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I know that, that, so we're sitting here talking about this right now, it, it's not reasonable that we don't, I don't know what we can, but it's not reasonable that we don't do everything we can.
So take, let's take this particular incident away and say, anything that you determine
that potentially could be a public health risk to surrounding property owners or individuals, what is the protocol? What, and disclose notification and apply that in this case? Because as, as a board of health, there are, there are things that you feel that you have a responsibility if there are potential for environmental concerns or public health issues, so I guess that would be, you know, the calling card here.
Yeah, and really, the only thing that I can think that comes to mind is the KPO notification.
Well, if, if you, if you become aware of a public health nuisance, I mean, as, as the, you know, you're the enforcement arm for the board of health, I mean, you, we can, we can notify the owner, but, you know, of, of the violation, because I would assume, and this will take some conversation with the county attorney's office, but, I mean, we were notified as a courtesy through the DNR.
Right.
Right, they didn't notify us with the expectation that we were going to do anything other than accept their notification.
Right.
So I think now, the next step would be to have a conversation with the county attorney's office, exactly what, you know, what role does the board of health play in this, and the same conversation with the, with the DNR, and see what, you know, okay, what do you do?
So what would happen, Paul, what would happen? And I'm sorry, I got us so far off this, but I feel really strongly that, that something is not happening in as timely a way as it used to happen. If we had a railcar accident out here on the road, right, just north of, north of Nevada, and a railcar that was carrying these exact same chemicals that are sitting under this ground right here, spilled, right, and it spilled on this private property, and let's call it for the sake of argument, a daycare center, right, what, what would happen? You think we'll, would, you think we would be okay with, with that full on?
Okay, no. And I, and I think part of this is, and I might be making this up, but it isn't, does part of this have to do with, with, at what level in the ground, I mean, how far down these, they've, they detected these chemicals, I mean, I don't believe there's, I don't believe they've detected them on the surface.
Well, they claim there's eight to 10 feet, they said there's eight to 10 feet to groundwater, I don't know anywhere in Story County where it's eight to 10 feet to groundwater, I mean, that's crazy.
Right.
So I don't understand why they're just generally saying that. Plus, when you get a level here, if you, it, it's gonna gas off up into the, so you'll have the vapors there, you might not have product right there, but you will have the vapors there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to have more conversations with the DNR and, and find out what their intentions are, and then find out what, what role the board of health has in that. Because I don't know that the board of, I mean, yeah, technically we could buy, we could, we could notice the owner of the property, that, where the Dairy Queen sits now, of the violation. But I, but I don't know what the next step would be as, as far as the board of health and forth, but I, I don't know that the board of health, well, I'm sure we do, we would have the authority to, to take them into court before they've been done.
The current owner.
I would assume that.
Yeah, I think it's the current owner, because they'll, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know what, you know, what authority we would have with the owners of the property of the south. It wasn't registered daycare, and simply all that means is that there's, if you have under a certain amount of kids, you don't have to register with the Department of Human Services. You can watch up to eight or nine kids at a time, seven, six, six kids at a time, and not have to, not have to notify the Department of Human Services to provide daycare, so.
All right, so what I'm hearing is contact Story County Legal and talk to them about what, what substitution takes, and then I, I should probably draft a letter for your signature.
Right.
To the DNR.
Yeah, I, I'd be really interested to see what, I mean, what's, what's happening with it. I mean, they're, they're fully aware where it's located and that there's a, there's an occupied residence right south of it.
I, I, yeah, I, so I don't know what authority we have here, but it feels like we've got some responsibility, I'm not saying we have any authority at all, we do have responsibility, we've got some responsibility, we are aware now that there is potentially cancer causing chemicals sitting at, at a minimum underground, but maybe seeping up onto the ground at a place that we know children are playing, and we don't know that the parents of those children are aware that there's a problem.
And, and that's my biggest question for the, for the attorney's office, the owner of that residence is aware of what's there.
Yes.
So our, our next step is, so what, you know, what authority do we have, I mean, to force her to turn over the name of, you know, list of names of parents? So, and, and we need to make sure that we copy the city.
And they have, and they did.
They got the same.
They did copies in DNR, yeah. Okay, so onward. Ms. Laney, that's going on, Center Grove Orchard update, since 2009 they submitted an engineering plan, working with Jerry on this planning, and so right now, we found that their house, they're discharging right up off to the site, so this week they're setting a tank, and we're going to treat it as a holding tank, and then they will pump it, and then eventually hook into the, the full larger system that is being engineered for the whole complex here. So this is an interim step that we're making them take to avoid discharge right to the human surface. Cornerstone, they came in for renewal on their CUP, so I went ahead and just did a review of their septic because they add a lot of people constantly, so we're, we're working with them to get water used to make sure that their systems are large enough to handle what they have in place. The Baptist church right next to it, you know, DNR put that in, we have no records on that, so that's another project if the winter stays wintry enough. And then the Ames Country Club proposed residential subdivision, that, there's some zoning issues with that, but then also there's a lot of discussion whether or not they should use a package plant versus individual septic systems.
At one time, the city of Ames was going to require them to build a system that the city of Ames could easily tie into, and this is back, you know, six or eight years ago when there was a proposed, proposed project out there, is the city of Ames still requiring that, or not?
They're not requiring it, but they're making it, I think they're, they're, we're designing it such that it would be easy hookup, so all the systems are going to be in the front yard with pipes going, I mean, this is still just really in the preliminary planning. My, my question for Ames would be whether or not they will make them install that sewer line while the street is being under construction, that would be the smart thing to do. I would still like to see a package plant, the developer said, no, that's too expensive to do it that way, that money comes out of my pocket, and I said, it comes out of someone's pocket, period. So you just have to package it as a true key lot, as opposed to a lot where you have to put the septic system in. He said, no, you can't, you just can't market it that way, you can't pay money that way.
So what do you mean by, by package plant?
Pack, you know, something where the 14 lots would all just flow like a little mini, just like self squat.
Okay.
Okay? Where it all collects, and then there's a small treatment plant, one for that whole group as opposed to 14 individual ones. I don't, either way, I don't have a huge problem with, because they will be probably advanced on all of them, because it's really lousy soil there, so they would have to be maintained annually by a maintenance contractor for the life of the system, so whether it's here or here, it's going to get the same hands on, so.
Now, isn't the country club's mound system right there?
It is, it's right there, so they're going to remove that, and that'll be, I might try to get an educational thing go for that, because we'll get to slice into that mound and see what the, you know, the golf course bruise did and all this stuff, but, so, yeah, that's their goal, and then they are either, it'll be in advanced or another mound or something like that, sort of over by the pool.
Oh, good, right by the pool.
Yeah. And they're thinking of naming one of the roads if they get that bar purpose after Larry Curtis.
Larry pushed hard, I mean, he, gosh, as long as I've been in Ames, Larry's been pushing for this, for this subdivision, or a version of this subdivision to get done, I think it's completely appropriate if they do that, and I'm, I'm actually proponent, I think that's, that's bad ground out there, that, what is it, 14 acres or something, it's ground that's not really usable for anything other than potentially housing, and I think it can be a really, really good project, I just want to make sure that we do things, have things done the right way.
Yeah, and it's working, because Ames is involved all the way, obviously.
And I think, I think they've planned for that ever since they moved out there.
The first plans I saw on it were from the early 80s, I, I think there wasn't, so the place was built out there in 71 or 72, and the first plan I saw, actually Gary Thompson put a deposit down to buy the first lot, and this had to have been like 81 or 82. Now it's gone through multiple incarnations, and now I think it's Chris Gardner that, that is the developer, who, and I'm hearing now that, that he would like to start moving dirt yet this spring, so things are going to have to move pretty rapidly for that to get done, and what we've yet to see, anything, anything on the, we've heard preliminary stuff, right, but we've not seen any zoning, any platting, anything like, I don't know what Gary's dealing with right now.
Right, well, we had a conceptual review Thursday, last Thursday, so the next step would be for them to submit a, is the preliminary plat to the city first and then to the county.
Goes to the city first, I think.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're, you know, city, county, working together on it, it'll, looks like it's going to maybe happen this time.
It has potentially be a really good project, but I'm telling you right now, that corner of Cameron School Road and George Ocean Harbor is just going to get tougher and tougher and tougher.
Well, the intersection north of us, not the best intersection, 190, yeah, no, right?
Yeah. And then one other thing, just yesterday, we had the inspector, the guy that does all the Story County and Ames for the boat inspections and the hotel inspections, boy, did he have a lot of interesting stories, I will say that, and so he just kind of told us, you know, what all he does, and how, how many Chinese restaurants get inspected, so they, they always do a preliminary one, they always respond to complaints, and they try, try to get their once a year restaurant inspections done, but they're way behind, way behind. way behind. Interestingly, he, and then he also has to do food production, and he has a huge territory for that, so, you know, like places that bakeries or places that freeze corn, or, you know, all those things are also on his list. They are not allowed to go over 40 hours a week, so, you know, you know, it's either on his own time or he goes by the wayside. So, so anyway, he can, he was very helpful and, you know, so bed bugs or things like, anything like that, we called him and, and then he, that office also coordinates the foodborne illness things, if they see a pattern, that's, they're the ones that hopefully catch that as well as Story County Public Health. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thanks, Margaret.
Margaret, you're doing a really nice job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely. Public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on today's agenda, the board may not take any action. My comments to the open recurrence, the open meeting, along with major stuff in the future, not see anybody moving to make the agenda assignments, send to me, Wayne.
Pass.
Pass. I'll pass also announcements, Wayne.
Question, we have schedule for tomorrow, annual township trustee meeting.
That's been, that's been moved to next Wednesday.
Has been moved, and what about the Marshall story?
That'll be a conference call.
Call.
Because Ken Rhodey was gonna have to come down from Storm Lake or Spirit Lake.
That's temporarily still on the.
That's still on for a conference call.
All right, okay. And the only other announcement is that depending upon whether the Ohio Association of County Scholarship Committee, Judging Committee will be meeting if you ask that office, we have narrowed the 32 original applicants down to a couple individuals from each of the six districts, and we will be having face-to-face interviews, one call-in because he couldn't get released from his activity to be there, so we hope to finalize that. And if we can't hold this meeting on Thursday and fourth, it will be on the 10th as our snow day makeup, so I'm eager and interested in seeing who comes out on top. We had some outstanding advocates, these are employee county, children of county employees that are applying for scholarships from the Ohio Association of Counties.
I take that in mind, Margaret.
Oh, yeah.
Pat? I've got a couple announcements here in front of me. We had a blood drive here yesterday in this, in this roof, and then we got a thank you note from the American Red Cross, thanking us for sponsoring the blood drive, 23 presenting donors and the collected 21 toll units, so. And we may look at doing it a little bit differently in the future, so we'll figure that out. And then another announcement tonight, Ames Open House for the C2C Plan has been rescheduled until February 22nd. That was gonna be at the library in Ames tonight, so we have rescheduled that to February 22nd from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Ames Public Library. And Board of Health meeting for this afternoon has been canceled.
And don't forget, today is Groundhog Day, and Hudson County Field is scheduled to see his channel, so just want you.
Six more weeks of winter.
Six more weeks of winter, so just.
Ready? There is, West Virginia.
And so forth, let's hope the weather and time.
All right. We re-adjourn.
Second.
One to the second, we re-adjourn.